Father God, I come to you once again. Lord, I thank you so much for this season, which we picked and celebrated the birth of your son, Jesus Christ. God, I just pray that he'll be with our county.
Lord, I know the direct impact that this virus has had on a lot of people. God, I just pray that you'll be with them as they get ready to sit down this season. Love one's not there. God, I just pray that you'll be with his body of commissioners as they get ready to take up the business at hand. And Lord, may they always look to you for each and every decision that they've made in their lives going forward. And I pray that you'll be with us now with each and everything this time. Praise your son, Jesus Christ, in the name of my prayers. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the good life of the United States of America. And to every mother which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would just like to make one announcement real quick. Commissioner Davis has been around some of the COVID. I hear lately, and that's the reason she decided not to come to that. She was putting back the act, it's unintentional. She does not show her past to the public, but she thought it was safe to have you not do the.
I like it.
Why marketing here too, same reason?
Greg Brooks.
Here.
David Davis. Daniel Deo. Dwyane Esmona.
Here.
Mike Evans. Jeremy Kinsey. John Pipinger.
Here.
Samantha Trancom.
Here.
James Witty.
Here.
First on our agenda is approval of minutes of previous meeting.
Motion to approve on the proof minutes.
Say.
Motion by Pipinger, second by Brooks, any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Daniel Deo.
Yes.
Dwyane Esmona.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
Next is approval of reports of office.
Motion to approve.
Say.
Motion made by Pipinger, second by Brooks, any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Daniel Deo.
Yes.
Dwyane Esmona.
Yes.
John Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is approval of notary. We have two. The first one is Angela Thomas Davis. And the next one is Carolyn E. Bryan of Bryan's Auto Cell in Benton.
My motion to approve, say.
Motion made by Woody, second by Pipinger, any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Daniel Deo.
Yes.
Dwyane Esmona. Jeremy Kinsey. John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is going to be the budget amendments. We have three and 101 general. The first one comes from our lottery. From on five, six, five, zero, zero, dash, four, one, zero, of ten dollars. Next one comes from on four, six, nine, eight, zero, of other state grants of two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Moved over to on five, six, five, zero, zero, dash, seven, zero, nine, and five, six, five, zero, zero, dash, one, nine, six. A total of two thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. The next is the Sheriff's Department coming out of line one, zero, one, dash, five, four, one, one, zero, dash, four, nine, nine, of a thousand. Into line one, zero, one, dash, five, four, one, one, zero, dash, four, five, one, of ten dollars. Next is the Sheriff's Department coming out of line one, zero, one, dash, four, four, one, seven, zero. Miscellaneous refund of a thousand fifty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents over into line one, zero, one, dash, five, four, one, one, zero, dash, four, three, one. And one, zero, one, dash, four, five, four, one, one, zero, dash, three, three, eight. And that equals one thousand five hundred, one thousand fifty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Motion to approve budget amendment 101.
Say.
Motion made by Pipinger, second by Kinsey, any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Daniel Deo.
Yes.
Dwyane Esmona.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
The next one comes out of fund one, twenty-two. And it's the Sheriff's Department out of line three, nine, zero, 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 of four hundred and fifty dollars over into five, four, one, five, zero, dash, three, five, five, for travel, four hundred and fifty dollars.
One, twenty-two, that is the drug fund, great.
It just says undesignated one, twenty-two.
I believe that's out of drug fund for travel, for some training that they're doing now, the drug fund, so.
Yes, like coming out of our county fund.
Make a motion, we approve the budget amendment. Say.
Motion made by Woody, second by Deo, any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Daniel Deo.
Yes.
Dwyane Esmona.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
Our next one is a resolution to discharge surplus property from the Sheriff's Department. We had this one from last month. They gave us a resolution for it. It was for the two thousand fifteen Nissan Pathfinder. We'll call it resolution twelve, dash, one, dash, twenty. Resolution to discharge surplus property, whereas the following listed property has fulfilled its intent, usage, usage and longevity and service to the county of Polk and continuing usage, has become suspected to the extent outcome, with such property belonging to as following, two thousand fifteen Nissan Pathfinder S L four-wheel drive. Now therefore be it resolu- resoluited by the Polk County Commission meeting in regular session this day seventeen of December twenty twenty. Pursuit of TC five, dash, fourteen, dash, one, zero, eight, one and two and other laws of the state of Tennessee that proceeds property which are hereby deemed to be unusable and or surplus by the Polk County Commission. With such being at any legal cell qualified under chapter five of the Tennessee Code of Nationality or any other abrogates law of the state of Tennessee, therefore two designated proceed from the cell be returned to one, eight, nine, fund patrol cars from which it was purchased. This resolution shall become effective on passage, the public welfare requirement.
Motion to approve resolution twelve, one, twenty.
Say.
Motion made by Pipinger, second by Kinsey, any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Daniel Deo.
Yes.
Dwyane Esmona.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
Next is East Polk Library.
I'd received the call from Ms. Newman on the guard to see the status of the library where it's located at in their building. They are willing to waive any fee until July the first for the, for the use of the building. But after July first, they would like to know that the county is going to enter into a one-year agreement. Year by year for the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars a year for the East Polk Library to stay where it is currently located. I've talked with Mayor Collins that's here today and different ones as far as trying to find another building that could possibly house a library that the county could look to go into an agreement with that would cost little to nothing, or at least a lot less than what this current one would run. And as of right now, we don't have anything available, but we are actively looking for that, so. That's the status of where the library stands right now, as long as the commission would look to that. And you know, if we get ready for the budget year, I believe everybody knows that that's when the budget will set, will be in July. And that's, that's why the Newmans have said that as of right now, no fees, as long as they did know that a one-year lease agreement, they do not want to do longer than a year. They want to go year by year.
What's total, that eight thousand nine hundred?
Be nine. Seven fifty, times that by twelve.
Eight hundred and fifty. How much?
Be nine.
Seven fifty and what?
Seven fifty by twelve is nine thousand.
That's that.
Here. And during that time, I mean, we can all be actively looking for somewhere else. Location's great for the library, I believe everybody knows that, where it's centrally located at. But also, if something does come up and trying to move this library, it's going to take a little while to get everything moved. Ms. Williams is in back, I'm sure would attest to that, you're not just going to pick it up and move everything and get everything moved in a, in a short time period, but this would give time until July of twenty twenty-two for us to be looking for somewhere to move the library at a cheaper rate.
Well, are they wanting us to agree to this one-year lease now?
They, they want to know that the county would be willing to go into that one-year lease just verbally more than anything, they didn't see anything in writing. It's all been done between me and Ms. Newman. But they're not going to move under seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. That's what they want for the lease of their building.
I mean, nothing verbal is binding at all, so what are they wanting? How is tonight?
I mean, that's just, that's, that's where it is. They're, they're, they're not going to charge the county anything right now, but they just won't. They assume that the county is going to look to lease that building come July first for seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. No, Eric's not here.
Eric's not here. Verbal contracts are somewhat binding in chance report.
I like that they've not seen anything, this is just what, they just want the county to realize that if, if they continue to stay there, that they're looking for the county to sign a one-year lease or come July first, or by July first.
So it's not the booting out the contractor, all these stuff, on the way.
Next is our inter-local agreements and resolution. Do you want to read that, read your resolution?
No.
Go about it.
So the interlocal agreement. I've met with both the city of Benton and with Duck Town, in which they have agreed to those interlocal agreements. Copper Hill will meet Monday evening, in which I will be present to meet with them. There is a resolution and those contracts are in your package. If this commission wants to go ahead, because we can go ahead and enter into that, and how it's will be presented. Copper Hill asked for it to be brought down to monthly payments instead of quarterly payments. They said that that would fit their budgeting better for Copper Hill. So if you notice on there with that resolution, it does say, number one, the city of Benton is fourteen hundred and forty dollars per quarter. City of Copper Hill's three hundred and forty dollars per month, and the city of Duck Town is a thousand and twenty dollars per quarter as well. If in the event that there is an issue, as long as these quarterly payments are made, if another city would need to do that in a monthly payment. But Copper Hill asked specifically for that. If you, if you like how those all read, and I do have the resolution here, it will be voted on, and we can move forward with this interlocal agreement.
Resolutions have to be read. Unless they're accepted as presented.
I mean, does anybody have a question with that interlocal agreement before we go through with the resolution?
Is there anything that keeps them from contracting with another entity to bring trash in?
No, they're, they're only within their cities.
Is there anything that keeps them from bringing trash in from another entity under this contract?
This is with those cities.
But there's nothing in the agreement.
So you think they're going to go get trash?
Right, I'm just asking if there's anything binding.
So you're saying if they go out and start bringing from another state?
I'm saying if they come out from a, a company organization under any kind of agreement with them, five oh one, six, three, uh.
No, I can tell you for Duck Town, we don't do any commercial pickup, we just do residential, so anybody that comes in, they have to do their own, it's commercial.
This is based on, residential only.
Right.
All right, is that included?
Copper Hill does not. It's like the way that they've been doing, Copper Hill does not take city trash either, or, I'm sorry. Commercial. Business trash.
Copper Hill nor Duck Town.
And the city of Benton, they've got, where they cut back a lot on theirs.
Well, let's make a resolution, oh, two, and oh, three.
Just over two.
There's binding to it.
This is a resolution for all three cities.
It probably, I mean, it apparently they're paying that way out, trying to have, seeing it as a question a little bit.
By knowledge, you're doing all double checking.
Yeah.
So Ben said he has residential, and Duck Town has residential only, and Copper Hill has residential only. It's say. I make a motion, we accept. Resolution twelve, oh, two, twenty. With a stipulation added that for Copper Hill and Duck Town, that price quoted is for residential only to be included in the final contract. Benton as stated in the, in the contract, and I think there was some things with Benton where they could provide some services, is that correct? With that stipulation, I make a motion to approve. As presented. As presented.
Motion made by John Hoyt, second by Esquonox, any discussion?
You said Copper Hill, you hadn't met with them and got a final agreement?
Not yet, they don't meet till Monday. And I didn't receive these until, was it the first of December? Somewhere around there, just right before your meeting that Eric got these back to me.
The protocol states that both sides have to agree. If the two sides have agreed and we agree, then it goes into effect for Duck Town and Benton. However, Copper Hill does not agree with this, then, then it'd be possible to come back, create a resolution for them.
And with meeting with.
Westford was standardized.
And with meeting with Copper Hill in the past, they were in agreement with this, and talking to Copper Hill's mayor. She just asked that I didn't come because she does have a new alderman or two, if I'm not mistaken. And, and like John Hoyt said before I read the resolution, where it does stay in there with the city of Benton. You know, they have, because they have a little more to do with, so they do some of our welding. We've had some boxes and stuff to, you know, weld to break, so they've been putting that cost in there. Backhold Bobcat services, because as busy as the Benton side is, I think the last couple of times that we've had it leveled and gravelled, it was a couple thousand dollars, and so they agreed to help out by doing that, but they just asked that they could have that in this resolution. And the way that will work is, is myself would contact the city mayor, and then we would send a letter on the, on what we're needing done at that time. So that way the city of Benton can't go running up and, and do a couple of odd dollars of work and say, hey, we don't owe you some money this quarter. It would be something other that would be between myself and that city mayor to get that agreement, to get things done.
It stipulates commission, our county executive, right? I thought I caught that in part of the word.
Don't know sure on that, I do know that it was between the mayor. And most of the time, you'll contact me if there is a problem, so.
Any more discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Daniel Deo.
Yes.
Dwyane Esmona.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
Next is hospital equipment.
Read your resolution, twelve, nine, two.
We did, but if he wants to read this.
Y'all want to read it, or you want to?
This may be one, this may be one we would read in the break.
You want to read?
Yeah.
So. Resolution twelve, dash, zero, two, dash, twenty. A resolution approving the interlocal agreement regarding the convenience center between Polk County, Tennessee and the city of Benton, Tennessee, approving the interlocal agreement regarding the convenience center between Polk County, Tennessee, the city of Copper Hill, Tennessee, approving the interlocal agreement regarding the convenience center between Polk County, Tennessee, and the city of Duck Town, Tennessee, and authorizing the county executive to execute this interlocal agreement on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee. Whereas the city of Benton, Tennessee, the city of Copper Hill, Tennessee, and the city of Duck Town, Tennessee, each use the county's convenience centers. Whereas due to the rising costs related to convenience centers and the disposal of solid waste, the county has requested that each city enter into an interlocal agreement and begin paying the following to the county. City of Benton, Tennessee, one thousand four hundred and forty dollars per quarter. The city of Copper Hill, three hundred and forty dollars per month. The city of Duck Town, Tennessee, one thousand twenty dollars per quarter. Whereas the city of Benton has offered to provide the following materials and services to the county upon written request. Backhold Bobcat services at eighty dollars an hour and per, and including worker. Gravel at fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents a ton, or current rate, subject to change. Coal mix, ninety-four dollars a ton, current rate, subject to change. Hauling charge, a hundred and twenty-five dollars per haul. And repair and welding work at eighty dollars an hour per worker. Whereas the county commission has reviewed the interlocal agreement and desires to enter into them. Now therefore be it resolved with this legislative body in session and assembled that the interlocal agreement regarding the convenience centers between Polk County, Tennessee, and the city of Benton, Tennessee is approved. The interlocal agreement regarding the convenience centers between Polk County, Tennessee, and the city of Copper Hill, Tennessee is approved. The interlocal agreement regarding the convenience centers between Polk County, Tennessee, and the city of Duck Town, Tennessee is approved. And the county executive is authorized to execute this interlocal agreement on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved, that this resolution take effect from this day and its passage to the public welfare requiring on this, the seventeenth day of December, two thousand twenty.
In notation, in motion, we added that that is for private garbage in Duck Town, Copper Hill, and private ad business.
Next, we have hospital equipment.
Doug, do you care a little more, you dealt with Erlanger more on this issue.
This is probably about the third visit we've had with Erlanger in the last, was since this COVID, they come up in January when things were looking rough, not January, March. And then it sort of died down, they backed off July, they called them, they looked again, something picked them, then it went down, I hadn't heard from them, then they called. And I showed them around again, Monday, it was on a Monday, probably, not this past Monday, Monday before. And supposed to have, they got a list, somewhat of a list, they sent, did you get that, Robby?
Yes, I did, there, in the day.
And basically, they were looking at IV poles, just certain things for their Bledsoe Hospital, for Murphy, and possibly down Chad and everything, but they didn't mention the beds in, in that right there. They showed interest in that at one time, where they were looking to expand, I think, over toward Erlanger North. And then that sort of, it's just, I mean, they're up and down just because of the COVID, so they don't really, nothing in store. So I asked him, sent him another email, he said, put the beds in there. They, they could probably use it in nursing home in Bledsoe County or somewhere, if need be, but still no price. I just texted him, four left to have, tried to see if I couldn't get a round number, because I don't know how you get, or I don't, I don't feel comfortable voting on something if I don't have a, you know, I don't know if we're going to offer a thousand or thirty thousand, you know what I'm saying, so. But that's, I hadn't, I just looked and still hadn't heard nothing back from the guy, so. It's hard to make a decision when you don't really know everything, but, but that's sort of where we're at on that stuff, so. It's not a lot, I think a lot of the stuff is, I think they won't, maybe, man, or what would, we're, uh.
I've got it pulled up, the items that they're interested in are two extra, extra duty washing machines.
Okay, yeah.
One. Jiratan, eighty-three, fifty-three sterilizer, Husky tin drawer, locking toolbox, and surgery. Stainless steel storage cabinet, cabinet and surgery. They're looking at ultrasound with probe, one crib, multiple lateral files, and approximately twenty-six IV poles is the, that's the only.
They did put the beds on there, I think we've got thirty beds, but I'm not even sure, I don't know what, I'd be, I don't know if the bed worth five hundred thousand.
Were they waiting on us to price them, or were they waiting on them to make an offer?
No, but you know, I do need to do a little research, even if they come back and say five hundred.
Yeah, just look it up and see what you use, I mean, you find anything.
Yeah, because we were, those were donated to us from nursing home way back, and they're still good, but.
I'm assuming they're going to wait around for another month if they're looking at this because of COVID.
Correct. The one thing, when this all came about, when, when Doug called and asked me about it, was, you know, if that was something other that myself and him, if they come back, let's just say next week, and that's not, that's not something that, that I can make that call on, I have to have a legislative body to have the approval to move forward with that. So if nothing else, if, and I know, I, I, I understand, because it's like Doug said as well, they thought like they were going to have us a list of what they really wanted, but that's what they sent. So I don't know how that you all would feel as far as moving forward to give the authority to let some of this stuff go, because if they come back in a week or two and they're wanting some of that equipment. It's either going to be that, or we could have to have a special call meeting to bring it back and, and to say that that's the only two options that we do have.
It's been good, you give us a full heart.
Yeah, I've been on it probably for the last week.
I wait and say to the man, I want they work. CT machine.
No.
Ultrasound.
Ultrasound, yeah, get CT done, it's, it's not good.
So ultrasound is probably in there, might be.
We've already, as a commission, already give you authority to get rid of that. Resolution ten, four, nineteen.
Yeah, I was thinking that was what the group called about all of it, you wanted to give some price, we didn't turn the power on, and that didn't work out, so.
You, you've got the authority to do that. I reckon we'd need on that. That's the resolution, you can look at it, it's ten, four, nineteen.
And, and that's, I know how this is going to work, if I get rid of it, and there's going to be some, and I've always worked this commission. I would never do anything behind his commission, and I would not do anything without the approval of this commission. Even though that resolution be sitting there, I feel like I hurt like another commissioner. I, I, I think that if nothing else, to have a special call meeting and move forward, or if you all are still resolved with that one right there, if your friends want some of those items gone.
You have to let them know what it's going to be.
And it's like Doug said, when this started a week ago, when this all first started, they kept saying that they were going to be, give us a number, and we'd know something. And this was the last one that we got, it probably two, three o'clock this evening.
Yeah.
They still haven't given us a number.
I talked to him last week.
What, what do you think first price on this would, would be? Can you just research it? I was going to try to have a bill, a committee meeting on the seventh of January, over something else. And we come up with something, maybe, but would have to vote on it. The final resolution. We just come up, all agree. I think we ought to give them a minimum. And what do y'all think a, a low number, firm number? Well, let's give them two weeks to research, but if we do it that night at a committee meeting, can we give? I don't want to have a voting session. Committees can't take place in the commission, on the boards. Well.
You know, and one thing that I did.
But seven thousand minimum?
Phew, it's hard to tell.
Well, they researched, John.
But what I was going to say, we actually, back when this first started, they needed some oxygen regulators, and we had thirty of them, I loaned them thirty. So if they don't. You know, the loaning stuff, you know, that's, that's hard to figure out too, but you know, I'm just, I don't, you know, I'm afraid to say, you know, I was thinking, if it's, they know a hundred dollar bed, no way. Five hundred a bed would be, you know, that's not that much money. You know, I don't know exactly, I know a new bed is expensive, so I don't, I'm really not sure what they're thinking on the beds. IV pole is probably not that much, you know.
They're high, they're certified.
And they are, you know.
They're not cheap.
We have, the sad part, we've got a bunch of IV pumps that we, we bought just before it closed, and they, they don't use them, they don't fit their, their lines.
It's like seven thousand minimum.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to put a number out there for them, but.
You know, if they'd had a number, you know, that was part of that happening on there, if they'd had a number, we've been able to give you that number.
Oh, yeah, if it's in thirty thousand dollars, we'd be.
Right, here was a refurbish, when I just looked up, it was fifteen hundred dollars, refurbished, don't know exactly what that consists of. I think, yeah, what is it?
Like, put this on next month's agenda?
I'm just waiting, waiting to make a call first.
Well, I mean, they called me like they're in panic mode, I gotta need this done, the next thing you know, two weeks out. We've been hearing something in hospitals for a year.
Do you think this has been going on since March? I mean, they were interested.
They are, just according to how the COVID raises, you just don't really.
Yeah, they're not too interested, or they didn't put the number out there.
Well, they would have already came and got your stuff.
Okay, wait months, or we need to have a vote meeting on the seventh, or we have a building meeting.
If, if they do, I'll be sure to contact you all as commissioners, and that way we can take the proper challenges and have special call meeting.
Why don't we make it?
But it'd take a long time to have a special call meeting.
Chair will be inclined, we can, if we're on adjournment night.
The commission's already done a resolution, and he'll be working with Ducktown, let them sell whatever it is. Whatever they get for, that's more than what we got now.
But for the chair to entertain.
Everything there is used.
Chair will entertain the thought of not adjourning the meeting, but continuing the meeting tonight to the seventh. Then if they come back with a price, then we don't have to do the special call notice.
Well, you know, and I hadn't thought, but the city hadn't voted, we wouldn't be able to, because we hadn't voted to approve it basically till our January meeting, so it wouldn't.
Right, but as far as us.
We'd vote on the manual price at night.
We have it on the agenda for tonight, if we continue the meeting, then we can have the finalization of this meeting at the seventh. And if it turns out that they don't give an offer, then you can consider this meeting concluded. You don't have to do anything, you don't have to do the special notices. If nobody calls for an adjournment at the end of this meeting, the chair will continue the meeting at the seventh. That's your way around the public notice, that's your way around time frame of notice, and that's your way around, well, the answer is going to pay your way around paying the commission. And if it's time to get the request in, right?
I'll call him again in the morning, just to see if I can pin him down. And if he texts me, I can remember here the next thing, but if he was to run, he did, I'll let you go.
Tell him shake and bake, you got memorial reading that name. Got them all, cop.
All right, do we have any announcements or statements?
Uh, Doug, can everybody on the building committee meet it? I was going to say seven, six now, on the seventh, at six o'clock, and we, hour before the hospital meeting. Oh, you know, who's on?
Beer board will be meeting at, what did you say, six? Beer board will be meeting at five thirty at nine.
That's on the fee, I think.
Yep.
This is seven.
And it'll be meeting, the beer board will be meeting at five thirty at nine anyway, we've got, that other meeting on the field.
Oh, we just got two meetings this week?
We don't have, yeah. But that's fine, that's why we arranged.
Yeah, we'll take seven thirty, we work on the mission, and building committee meeting six, at four hours. Oh, four o'clock.
On the seventh?
Yep, at six o'clock. Commission meeting at seven, at eight.
We'll finish our commission meeting at seven, on the seventh. You guys have anything?
Yep, we got initially not planned on, didn't know whether we would make it up here tonight or not, because we've had some illnesses and families and all that, but we did last night. Um, first and foremost, wishing all of you Merry Christmas, we appreciate the effort. Kind of give you a little update, out of the fourteen days of December that you ran, some number, I'm looking at the schedule. Was it eight, eight or nine days? Eight or nine days out of the first fourteen, we had the three trucks up in the county. The contract, you know, it says two twenty fours, two twelve. When we looked at it, nine one one people give us here, plus the first two months of our data on call stuff, we looked at times and did a kind of a demand analysis. We came up with, the twelve hour truck in Ducktown needs to be here in the day to start off. The twelve hour truck in Benton, that Benton side needs to be at night to start off. And so we're putting up a third twenty-four, and the day part, they stay up here, the night part, they go to Benton. We'll change those times as things grow and evolve. Wanted to also let you know that as of today, we've hired two additional people, and we have four that should be hired by the middle of next week to come onboard as new full-time employees. So things are getting there. It's been a little bit slower than what we would have wanted to do. Mostly because of COVID and all this stuff that we're absolutely tired of hearing about. And so one other thing that we wanted to put out there on the table to kind of show our commitment to the county is, starting January first, we're going to do what we would call a ninety day look back, that every ninety days, we're going to look at the schedule for the previous three months. For every twelve hour shift that we haven't staffed, due to callouts or lack of people, we're going to self-assess our company a two hundred and fifty dollar penalty. And every quarter, we're going to write that check back to Polk County. And so we can work with Robbie to do that, or we can take whatever that penalty may be, and reduce the subsidy bill the next time for that amount, whatever y'all, y'all choose to do. But we wanted to do something to show our commitment to the county, to keep on going, and, you know, working to make things improve and better.
Run that subsidy back again, what was that?
So it's called a ninety day look back, it's done all over the country, in different places, and what we do is, we'll take January, February, March, and once March is over with, we'd look back at those three months. And every day that one of those twelve hour trucks was not scheduled, because of callouts, lack of staff, whatever the case may be, we assess ourselves a penalty of two hundred and fifty dollars. Basically, we should work harder to do what we're supposed to do.
Twenty dollars based on what, per shift?
Two hundred and fifty dollars per shift that it's missing. So in the first third, first, first ninety days, if we're missing ten shifts, April the first, we're going to write Polk County a check for twenty-five hundred dollars. And it's just a way to make our staff that do the schedule, and do the recruiting of people and all that work a little bit harder, to make sure that we live up to our commitments. So that's all we have for y'all tonight, we just really wanted to come up here and to keep our relationship going, tell y'all Merry Christmas, thanks for the partnership.
Have you got us a local person for contact?
Funny you should say.
That's why.
Booger accepted tonight, we hired him in the truck. We talked to him tonight before the meeting started, we've been talking off and on, there was some negotiation between us and him. But sitting outside tonight, he officially accepted the supervisor role for Polk County.
You weren't even got up here? We got him in the truck, we're laying out.
Yeah, so he'll start that January first, there's a little bit of training between now and January first that he'll need to go through on our systems, and how to order stuff, and do some scheduling things. So we're going to give him that amount of time to do some training, he'll officially take over as the frontline supervisor.
People raise their head with me, I call him, and then he calls you, instead of me calling you.
You can still call me, it doesn't matter.
I'll probably call both of us, to be honest.
You're welcome to.
Is there a fine man pretty good up here last month? Daniel Darren, somebody? It's been final hour, and you.
One thing, one thing I do want to put a bug in y'all's ear, with the uptick in Corona. The uptick in Corona, both, you know, it's all over the country right now. We're seeing some extended wait times in the emergency rooms. Highly significant wait times in the state of Mississippi, and I think Tennessee is headed in that same direction. Some of the areas in Mississippi are holding patients in the ambulance outside for upwards of eight hours before they have beds available. If we see that becoming a problem up here, we'll make sure that y'all are aware of it before it impacts things up here, and we'll try to put some plans in place to bring some Mississippi staff up this way to backfill. We've got some down there that are already working on their Tennessee licenses to come up here and help, but it's a problem all over the country right now. We just want y'all to be aware of that.
Well, I've had several conversations over the last couple of months, and you've answered my questions. Didn't necessarily like to answer them, you've answered them, and they've been pretty forthcoming, truthful with their information. I've had a few more deals with them about that, so. Have you had any issues as far as work-wise in the county?
Just, no. Whenever I did reach out and contacted, after the November nineteenth meeting, which I called both at different times, and didn't get a hold of, and John had got a hold of, so that was how come whenever I'd sent that letter into the subsidy check. But I was shocked, I will say this, as Chris is here today. We'd had a, had an incident at courthouse, I won't think from around the first of December, I had a lady slip and fall. And I really expected to see Chris in a QRV, and when he came in, in the other ambulance, in the third ambulance, and explained to me that that day that he'd been up at the takeout, because there was, ambulance was in Ducktown, and the ambulance was in Benton, and the, ambulance on each side, and he was at the takeout just to be stationed, I guess, more than anything, and he was able to come pretty quick. I mean, I'd give you twenty minutes tops, you know, to be there and to be talking to the person that had the fall, where she busted up her knees and her hands and things like that, whenever she did fall. So I was, and I'll be honest, I was shocked, because I figured that you'd be in in the QRV, but she came in in the ambulance, and Chris explained to me what I just explained, so. I'd just really like to see that, that fourth ambulance and to see its staff, as the, as the contract is, that's, that's the only thing that, you know, that I do here. And I have, I've talked to, and I'll not say, but I've talked to members of this commission, to your family, that have called me with questions, you know, and reach out and get an explanation, but, you know, I just want to see that contract to feel to the, to the twenty, two twenty fours and the two twelves like it has, and I do understand with the, with the hiring, but.
With a nationwide shortage, I wonder if John Holt, Chairman Lambs, made if we could all meet and then look at that. It's just an idea, that two hundred and fifty dollars a day y'all are talking about, you know, we've already budgeted for it. And, you know, our main priority is, you know, provide ambulance service for the citizen. If we can negotiate something, y'all about, like, say y'all is going to pay us twenty-five hundred, we might work out some kind of agreement, if it's legal, as far as contracts and stuff, to let y'all keep twelve fifty of it to add to the sign-on bonus, you know, to draw employees.
And we've talked about that idea, we've done some sign-on bonuses in other locations we've had. I'm not a personal fan of them, because I don't, I don't think that long-term they work, if people are there for our company for any length of time, and Jamie can probably attest to this too, from his side. In my opinion, if I'm an employee looking for a job, and I see Care-Mat, or AMR, or Rural Metro, or whoever, putting this extreme sign-on bonus out there for five, ten thousand dollars, I'm going to stop and think, man, something's got to be going on that's wrong there.
Well, I figured everybody knows there's a shortage.
Ten thousand dollars to come work. Now, I was proven wrong in one county in Mississippi, it got us four employees, so it did work there, but historically, they don't work.
Well, I think if it's a known fact, there's a nationwide shortage, and I think people would understand.
He is, now, we do have an internal incentive program where if Booger, any employee recruits somebody that comes to work for us after six months, we give him a thousand dollars to tell him thank you, because your best advocates are your employees. So we've taken, you know, put that out to all our employees, and they're working to recruit people, they talk to people all the time. The problem is, is just like everywhere else in the country, we don't produce enough of us to do what we need to do.
Well, another revenue that's been used on sign-on is split the sign-on, fifty percent, like, thousand dollars equals five hundred sign-on, and that other five hundred, next three months added to the, they pay per hour, for three months. That gets them in there and working.
We're working on some new ideas, some recruitment incentive type ideas, but you have companies literally nowadays, Pinellas County, Florida, will offer you thirty thousand dollars to come work for them for three years. And so there's, there's exorbitant sign-on bonuses out there, and they must not be working effectively, because these people have been running their same campaigns for the last five years. But we didn't want to take up a lot of your time, we just wanted to say thank you. You know, we're trying to stay up here in front of you as much as we can, to keep that open and honest and transparent relationship. And please know, you're not going to like every answer you hear from us, and there's things that happen in our industry, with our company, that we don't necessarily appreciate happening, but we work as fast as we can to do it. Week after Christmas, we'll bring in another new ambulance. We've been waiting on some, some equipment to come in, instructors and some other stuff, and it's all in now, so we'll be driving them up here the Monday after Christmas.
Has a twelve hour truck on the east side of the stack, says the contract is going to be?
Since the contract, I ran December, I can, I can look back previous to that much, you know, but December, it was eight or nine days. Out of fourteen. But I'll be happy to look back previous to that and let you know, because I know it was up in November as well.
I was just curious, because that's what I hear on the east side. You know, we've called many all day, but if your mom's dying, it means.
Absolutely, I agree with you a hundred percent, and I'd be glad to look back and give you that, I don't mind at all.
That's what I was getting at. Yeah, I mean, that's why I sort of come up with anything to get, all answers up and running, I mean, that's the main, you know, that's our number one priority.
But we do have, in the next two weeks, you'll see six new people come onboard, so, they're coming.
But also got some reports we're going to give to Robbie for y'all, and we'll start through that one.
Sure, there's a call log showing you the times of the day that we received the calls, where we went, and all that kind of stuff. And we'll leave those for y'all, if y'all want to take a peek at it, it's up to you, but it's something that we give the counties that we serve.
Great big color.
So, we will meet again to finish our meeting on January seventh, at seven o'clock, and then.
One other announcement, just for everybody's work, all the dunks will be, Grace Creek and Benton Dunk sites will be closing half a day early for Christmas, on Christmas Eve. All Dunk sites are open on Christmas Day, so that Friday, they are, they are open. All of them will be open running on Saturday, day after Christmas.
Why not be working their act? Well, they're making, they're making a lot of sense.
And, yes, the reason why is, there's only two sites open on that Thursday, it's the most, it's the busiest sites in the county, it's Grace Creek and Benton. So what the company's going to do is, they're going to start working on Wednesday, emptying out all the other sites, so everything, when it opens up, pan them on, you know, on Saturday, everything's ready to go, so I am myself giving those workers that half day on Thursday. Should be closed on Friday, be open back on Saturday, all county buildings are going to be closed, the schedule we took is Thursday and Friday for rentals, and Thursday and Friday for New Year's.
I don't understand.
Two days for Christmas.
They've got means to.
Only the dunks will be closed on, on Christmas Day and New Year's.
And they're blowing up the bullshit.